So if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America. And to the government, for which it stands, one nation under one. And of its equal and liberty and justice for all.
Presuming that he'll take roll call for us, please.
Councilmember William. Three, yes, here, dollar, data.
Present.
Friends.
Sure.
And Mayor.
Here. So our study session, we are going to start off with a discussion, um, to follow up with our city tour. That we took a couple of weeks ago with Director Arnold, the Allen, with our county land bank. So I will give the floor over to Director Arnold.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'm sorry, weren't able to attend it. You and I have another one.
We will, we will.
Uh, so I am here. I'm ready to have a conversation about what you folks want to have a conversation with. We all went on that band tour. We saw a lot. Uh, I've got some ideas for sure. You can count on me. I, I got. All of the ideas, if you guys don't think of something, but uh, what's on your mind with, with this? What is sticking out to you most with the? Code enforcement, the state of the city in general, or?
There is a lot of work to be done.
While we're calling enforcement. Do you want us to tell you what are you?
No, I, I knew it was a concern that day. I'd, I'd take the complaints or. Uh, in general, I can tell you that where we're thinking in terms of this work is. There are some good things going on in Battle Creek. Um, their paint sharing program I know is one of them that a prior code enforcement officer looked into. And that our current, current code enforcement officer just hasn't been on the job long enough to have met those folks. Uh, we have an easy introduction to make there with, uh, actually some of the same folks that could be useful to us, giving. Some information on how they got that paint program going, how much of a program it is, or is it just? Yeah, the city holds on to people's old paint and you can come take some if you want. Uh, we'll see how formal that is as well as, uh, um, afterwards. Uh, City Manager and I were talking with, uh. Um, Krista and looking more to the vacant property registration, which would be another thing that they have already in Battle Creek. And that it'd be the same folks we talked to over there. So, uh. We don't take that, oh, we're going to go meet with Battle Creek as the end of the line or as, as the whole story on that, but certainly. They've got some good ideas. They've got some good things going and that's what we like. We like consistent things that we know work. So we're going to be looking into that pretty seriously. I could say a lot about strategy from there, but.
Councilman Williams, do you have some comments?
Yeah, I got some input. Um. Not to take you off course, but, um, one of the things I saw was a lot of, I don't know, maybe, um. Unmanicured, um. Trees and things, um, us being a tree city. Uh, maybe there's something we can do to try, you know, try to help with that, um. You know, but a, a, a lot of the neighborhoods have almost a canopy of trees, you know, that, that. Cover the streets. Um, that's not necessarily a bad thing. But you know, we may have, um, people who may need a little bit of help with the trees that are on, you know, on their properties that, you know, they probably just couldn't necessarily. Afford to take care of or, um, keep up, you know, so maybe there's something we can look into there as well.
So I think with, with that one. When, when we take a problem like that, the, the first group of people that jumps into my head are the people that for whom that isn't a problem. Able bodied people with, with enough disposable income where if there's some trees that need maintenance on their property, they're capable of doing it.
Right.
We all know that that's maybe not even half the, the picture in Albi.
Thanks.
Yeah.
The property next to me. There's a tree where half of it fell down, half of it stayed and, and it's just a little. It's not a great huge tree. It's just one of those green straight up trees. But they go and they cut the grass. It's a bacon lot. They cut the grass and they cut around the tree. Now the grass has grown up taller. Park that's laying on the ground.
Yeah.
And then out by the street. There's a, a pile of shrub stuff that's been sitting there ever since last year. And somebody needs to pick that up. Then when you get up to the top of the hill here, right across from the park. There's a tree that fell down on a piece of land bank land, I guess it is. I called down here about it to see if, if the city could get it off of there because they're cutting around it and. So who do you notify, the land bank or the city? But that's because again, the grass there is getting taller than the tree stuff is laying out.
Yeah, the responsibility even for trees still, if they're on private property will be on the private property owner. But with that in mind, um.
So the ordinance should be notified. I don't know if Krista saw it because I had mentioned it to her before. I was trying to find out who it belonged to, so somebody could get it up because. It was a nice piece of property until that piece of tree. Now it's just all grassy and messed up.
There are, um, the ordinance that lets us, uh, write people up or their grass growing too long is the same ordinance we would use if. If I had a tree in my yard growing out, hanging into the street, garbage trucks, police cars can't get by. Um, so ultimately it is still the responsibility of the private property owner, but I think that is something that. Uh, we'll, we'll just take that bit of feedback and, and keep running with it. Got it. Trees that get knocked down, our code enforcement officer needs to hear that that's still vegetation. That's still noxious vegetation, just like the overgrown weeds are and, and you know, we can, uh. We can handle those situations. Situationally, of course, because we know we have trees that are. Half of it falls in your yard and half of it's, you know, growing in your yard and half of it's in the city right away. Um, you know, I think we've seen from Director O'Brien, some, uh, direction on getting the tree trimming. Under control because I think he would agree. It's a bit out of control right now. I think we all know the reasons.
Yeah, the owner that owns it shouldn't leave it alone now, you know, but.
Which would be. Great plug in back to our vacant property registration that we were just talking about. How that could help because then we will be able to at least see. You know, because our code enforcement officer isn't dealing face to face with people every day. He's dealing. You know, his face to someone's property, usually vacant, sometimes not. So especially in the cases where the owners are out of state. Well, I think that demonstrates the value of the.
Well, she's just in Bow.
The registration ordinance, yeah.
If I can just weigh in on some of the comments, um, Councilmember Williams, um, made. So the, yes, we are a tree. City, which means we have a lot of trees, city-owned trees and the right of ways. Um, we will actually be bringing before you at the next council meeting, our current tree contract, um, expires at the end of this month. And I know it's been a priority of the council for the past few years since I've been here to increase our, our budget in terms to address. The trees in our community and that's been done since, um, former Director Miller was put in place. So we, we've been working to do that. I will say the recommendation for the new service or tree service, we will be able to receive. A higher level of service than what we currently have been based off of the pricing. So I think we'll be able to address more trees. Um, when it comes to the overgrown trees, if they're touching the. Um, telephone wires and consumer power lines, unfortunately we can't. And those are, are crew, you're not trained to address those, so we need to rely on our partnership or working relationship with consumers to have them come out and, and. Um, adjust the trees that are actually in the power lines because we know that when we get big storms, that just causes other burdens for our residents when. Power outages and things like that. So I think in terms of that, we can work on our. Our partnership with those companies to come in and clear the overgrown trees that way. But then I think we will see a, um, higher level of tree work in this next. In this next contract.
When, when, uh. Vicky Clark was on council, she has started working with, uh, from the state about getting paint. For painting houses. You might want to. Check with her on that because she had just about got that all worked out.
Yeah, I knew that Battle Creek had it, but I.
Yeah, Lindwood Gray in Battle Creek. She's on the land bank board too. Uh, she, you know, that Washington Heights area up there. She's been very instrumental in that. So she might be a good one to.
What was the name again?
Lindwood Gray. And I was talking to, to the land bank about it because a lot of things are going on in Bow Creek. That's not going on here, but I, I think it's, you know, it might be because we're not moving fast enough. But a lot of money is going that way and a lot of repair work and, 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 and stuff is going that way.
Excellent.
We need to block it somewhere, keeping some of it.
I think some of these, some of these things are, are low hanging fruit that we can, in the, in the next 12 months here, we'll, we'll have an answer on. Getting paint, you know, to our residents pretty soon. And, and I'm not going to say that's a huge on our priorities right now. Still trying to get rental certification rolling, but like I said, low hanging fruit. If Vicky Clark's got a, a lead in on that and we already know some folks at Battle Creek have been doing it, then I think there's a type of program there that we can seriously look at adopting and getting it. I'm optimistic.
Got you. Um, another thing we noticed, well, I noticed while we were out there, um. Was a lot of the homes, especially in my precinct, we have a lot of, um, seniors that own the majority of homes in my precinct is owned by seniors. Um, and you know, they may have some small. Things that they may need help with on the outside of their homes, um, gutters, you know, things like that, roofs, things like that. Um, I know we had a. Apply for a NEP grant previously, uh, back in December.
Update for you right here.
That's perfect, but, um, if we can keep an eye or ear out for stuff like that where, um. We can find funds that could be dedicated to, um, help. Those members of the community, you know, with, with stuff like that. And if, you know, it doesn't cost us anything other than the time that we put forth to get the grant application done and, you know. Figuring out a partner who would help us, um. Yeah.
I will say we definitely could use more of that. Yeah, one thing on that, I just, you know, I don't always see the whole picture from, from where I sit, but definitely since. Since I started here, we've had a dozen or more from, from either milestone senior services or, or whoever else, uh, else, uh. Building wheelchair ramps. I know that's just. One angle of the, uh, aging in place and the accessibility problems with that in a. Town with aging infrastructure and aging populace like ours, but, uh, you should at least know that there are some groups doing that good here. The ones that we know about, we're going to continue to keep that good relationship with them and the ones that we don't know about, we'd love to know.
Right. Yeah, if you're aware of seniors who need home repairs, um, the Kellam County Senior Services, the Kellam County Senior Millage. There are programs through that department that covers the cost for seniors to address. A multitude of different services are provided through that. So encourage them to contact the, um, county senior service. Ms. De La Fenta, I think that's her last name. She came a few months ago and gave a presentation on the services that they provide. So we, there's, there's a lot out there for our seniors. We just need to make that connection, help them make that connection.
Mayor Pro Tem Jackson?
Yes, uh, thank you. I mean, I can sit here, sir. I would love to see precinct three cleaned up with some of those areas that we went through. But I guess my maintenance sign, I'm pretty sure speaking for everyone is that when they get up on. Up I ninety-four, if they're coming up on one twenty-one or the opposite way. That as they come over that bypass and start right there in that gas station, all the way through downtown, all the way through Superior, I mean, Eden Street.
Yeah.
Superior Street and also at Austin Avenue. That our town should be looking nice.
That's our cover page, right?
Exactly. So I believe number one should be to make sure that all of that's taken care of. And then the thing second would be that we can get taken care of in, in the precincts as a whole. So that people come into C I C D because when they come in the festival, the forks that begin, they, you know, everybody has a net.
Yeah.
It is not looking good. You know, and they're trying to hold, you know, who are that accountable, but we need to be holding all of us accountable to make sure that, uh. The proper, the right individuals can get on before those days come up.
Absolutely.
Especially June thirtieth coming up. So.
Yeah.
Coming through here, riding their cars and everything. So what you can get done, you know. Uh, to get started in that way and then take care of a precinct because this precinct is going all the way, all the way down.
Exactly.
I was going up to. Up, up Austin. Up Eden Street, across Austin going up Eden Street and the house is on the side of. John three sixteen church where the, uh. That house is falling in. And, and it really looks bad, but, but there's so many of those houses around where. The older people have passed away and, and the kids have done nothing with the property because the one across the street from it is going to be doing that pretty soon. And. Where they were good houses before, now they're just. They're just.
Yeah. I saw is that. Yeah, so. The process, once we get into it of what we can. For lack of a better word, make people do to their property. Um, and when. Gets complicated into the interpersonal relationship of. Well, he told our code enforcement officer he was going to get to it. We had arrangements in place by the time the code enforcement officer went back in a couple of weeks. Over, you know, this side of town with that one, we saw that that, that didn't happen, that didn't go through. So. In some ways, uh. In some ways it's a. Solvable problem. House with a hole in the roof. Yeah, there, there's a lot of violations, uh. Before you get to the point where you have a hole in there, but the hole in the roof on its own, um. It is bad enough. Outcomes of our actions, uh, I, I think are, are kind of. The central thing we should keep at the focus because I think right now, if we started writing up every house with a hole in the roof. We would just increase the county land bank's. Stock of properties.
That's right.
Which is executing the letter of our ordinances. The, the way we're supposed to be, but I think is overall counterproductive. To the rest of our mission here, uh, in city government, the different functions we have and that. If they're still standing. You gotta assume that to an extent, there's something holding it up and there's something worth looking at in each of these properties beyond just, uh, moving them to. Demolition, which at some point, um. You know, that, that's a tool in the, in the toolbox. Getting them to the point where you've. Talked to the building official and he's assessed that the value of the building, uh. Is far surpassed by what it would take to make that building habitable and occupiable. Uh, but I think that's a moving target, uh, with. How cost of materials can change. Or new construction or a town like ours where new sites can have constraints with environmental challenges. Well, really I don't feel the need to list more than that. The environmental challenges alone of this town can make new development really difficult. So anytime we see a house with a hole in its roof. We all see the same thing there, which is blight on the neighborhood, a spot where animals could, and, and people that don't need to be could get in there and hurt themselves or, or. Or whatever else damaged the property. Um, but there is still opportunity there that if given some time. Uh, well, I'll, I'll use Mr. Walsh on our Elm Street example. Um, that we were just talking to you folks a few weeks ago about the fence with, that was a house that. Before he did what he did to it, he would have said that should have been torn down, right? And now it's a house that is. Given a new lease on life, really with, with the work that we got into it. So if I fully admitted the answer, I'm sorry.
But my hope is.
Just a minute, just one thing, um, that I, one thing that I thought. That we would do following the, the tour is really, we may have to have a work session. But to come together and prioritize in terms of long-term goals as well as short-term goals. You know, if we're going to focus on, uh, Austin Street or the business loop, maybe that is a short-term goal to a certain extent. But I think if we can specifically identify a time, date, you know. Oh, what we want to do, then maybe we can reach that June thirtieth deadline with some of these properties. But I know we have a, we have monumental problems. So, and they are, uh. And they are, um, you know, they can get overwhelming, but if we can agree. On the short-term goals, maybe from now until the end of the summer, or maybe one thing each, uh, council member can look in their precinct. And identify long-term goals and short-term goals and just agree on specific areas. To address from now until December or from now until August, whenever we want to, but you know. That way at least we know what we're doing, we can share what we're doing and then something that's being seen and done.
Makes sense to me.
Probably all in agreement that we should try to schedule, um, study session. Specific to prioritizing issues.
And that we can make sure you and I get to do the tour that you gave them beforehand. So I don't come into this like going, ah, I wasn't there, I told you.
Absolutely.
So. But then maybe also at that time. We can look at how do we create that vacant property registry. Just put it into a term that would work for our city. Also, how do we address the fallen trees, but partially fallen trees along with, um. Paint share. You can kind of bring all of that. Together so that we can agree that this is how we run a city.
Something that is doable.
Yeah.
I agree with that, but I know that there are some places. I got a call the other day from a person in my precinct that was just a little bit upset. Because that house across the street. Okay, I, I was so glad that I had called Chief Kip. And he made the call to get the guys to come cut the grass because it was like three fourths feet tall. And, but before then, those animals over there was coming chasing people. They chased. Jock short. He was out cutting his grass. He had to leave his lawnmower and go home because the, the groundhogs and the raccoons. And the guy who lived next door. He was going out to get his dog and, and, and this, these two rep, uh, two groundhogs ran up at him. It scared him half to death. So he ran and let his dog out there. You know, and, and things like that. When you start prioritizing, you, you're talking about people being. Can, they can be hurt, you know, they can have a suit against the city about property that's just sitting. Uh, doing nothing and, and, uh, that one of the groundhogs chased my granddaughter. And, and you're not supposed to put anything out for them. And I saw I called down here to find about cages or something to catch them, you know, some, something's got to be done. Because I've got three families around. That house down the streets and around that's complaining about these groundhogs and I, and I keep telling them, well, we're doing what we can, we're doing what we can, but when you block the door and you're chased by groundhogs and. Raccoons, that's no fun.
Director Arnold, what is the standard, um, time period that we give? Um, a property owner, if they're cited for. Um, overgrown vegetation and things like that before we schedule it, have it debated.
Oh, and the guys that cut our grass or the cities. They would get, they came and they cut the grass and they said it's massive holes and things around there.
Wildness.
Right. So are we good on this? So maybe City Manager can stand out like a dude. Right, so are we good on this? So maybe city manager can stand out like a doodle. Find out a good date that we could all meet and reconvene for this. Anything else for Director? Head to our agenda items.
So we're going to have a study session?
Yes, yeah.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you.
With all of us being responsible in terms of bringing in ideas.
So going through our agenda items for the regular council meeting. Um we are going to be asked to approve moving. Miscellaneous receivable items to the twenty twenty-three summer tax bills. Along with billing what utility bills um for the summer. Tax bill row. Do we have questions in regards to either one of those items?
So were those records pulled from current property ownership records? I ask because Mark Huckton's property was sold to the college, I understand it. And yet his tax bill is three twelve eastern issue.
Yes, I believe those.
Pulled from currency and that's. Okay. I just remember the college making a bid to do about it when they were going to go to school and all that. Mark's moving away from that building, so I. Thought that he'd actually sold it.
Any other questions in regards to either one of those topics? Next will be approving the three year lease for the E P S twenty twenty-two Chevy Silverado. The gift is here to help answer any questions or give us insight.
Uh we've been leasing vehicles for over ten years now, I think, through the IRS program, I read a piece. Um and so one of them gave a turn, but they don't want to supply it's a vehicle.
Is it twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three?
It could be a month. Because there.
That's what I heard, IRS.
Ambitious.
So Chief, while you're up here, the next item um is the request. From the um reclamation chart. And the document that we have in front of us, it just. Says that they're having this event on the whole Caldwell School property. Okay, because we're in the packet that sheds that.
Yeah, that's what the mayor's saying though.
No, North to Broadway. That's in front of your church. Yes, they're requesting to close Maple Street off from North Street to Broadway.
Yeah, that whole section.
So it'd be in front of the church and heading across. It is.
Yeah, so that's why they want the church because the old playground is across the street from the church. So they don't want traffic going through. They have.
And Broadwell and north of the two cross streets, two Maple Streets, and you don't want cars going halfway down.
They must, they should have put, they put barrier.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, since barrier in the parallel.
I don't want to figure that one out.
As long as you had verbal. So do we have any questions for Chief Kip on this?
And it looks like there'll be an Elvis impersonator there, so.
Oh, I think I know who he is.
On his twenty-sixth.
You?
No. I heard since Baxter, I can't do the hip thing. Not related to this, but so I'll ask him after them.
Uh I got a question.
Yes.
Should we add that to the consent calendar? When during the regular meeting? So we can vote it in, everything is.
He wants to know if we want to move this to the.
Oh, yeah.
Why not?
We could move all of it to this consent calendar. I mean, this is her funky annual stuff.
What'd you say, Mary?
No, because she was like, we think, she thinks that we normally put this as a regular discussion and that.
Yeah.
But I I said we could both ways.
Yeah, I mean, we already discussed it.
So A, B, C, D.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. No, sir. He's getting a little ahead of him.
This is just stuck every year. There's no, there's no one ever.
A, B, C, D.
No, that's what I was saying, but they're saying no because it's tax bills, so. They're saying just D. To the consent calendar.
Are we good?
Yep.
The next um items we will be approving. The board application for Mary Slater for the Arts Commission. Um we don't currently have anybody seated. On that, so I spoke with her and I know she is going to be working diligently to get others to apply.
So what is the Arts Commission? Says the guy who works for an arts organization.
So it's a committee to try to promote arts, music and arts and poetry in town. Uh that committee was created under. Mayor Atkinson. Um we did have a poet orient.
Oh, okay, okay.
At one time on the. Committee.
So marketing communication as much as.
The fine arts.
The fine arts, okay.
I was gonna say, if you want to know what the duties are set up by ordinances. Duty of the art commission to advise the city manager and city council on all matters pertaining to arts programs within the city also. Include the review or request for support monetary or otherwise submitted to the city advise on priority of such requests developed and sponsored activities in. Forming arts and crafts and visual arts, also responsible for promoting arts and culture. In the community to include but not limit to dissemination knowledge with regard to the arts. Recognizing local artists and their work on appropriate cooperation with agencies and dealing with the arts. Implementing a public art program. For acquisition, placement and display of works of art within the city. Uh fundraising, preparation, grant applications to support art and culture in the city. You know, those are the broad strokes.
Yeah, thanks.
And that's basically what she's doing with uh Superior Arts. You know, she's doing those things already, so. It's a perfect person.
Exactly. Um also, we are going to be asked to approve the application for stat covering. Um to the E C board, that application is on your desktop. That was added to the agenda.
Do we have other um numbers of various boards and commissions who. Work in the area but have no other affiliation, so to speak.
I didn't hear Andy's question. Oh.
I'm asking, why are we putting someone who doesn't live in Albean on our E D C board? I'm just fifth reading his application, so.
Well, we have. Yeah, we swip K C C. We have others.
Yeah.
That don't reside in there again, that also set out the board.
Right, they're business owners, right.
He recently was um given the directorship at K C C for the industrial art. Well, now he is the director of a uh.
Eastern.
Eastern academic academic center, so.
Okay.
Alright, and next we'll be approving the purchase, the grills and trash receptacles for Barn Park. So we have information about people's pricing. Um and some collections. May I just tell you one, you're some inside items?
Yes, um so. Um Mayor Pro Tim Jackson, uh she's on the recreation advisory board and we talked about replacing the grill pits and trash cans and barns park. This is just coming before you because it was not budgeted in this year's budget, so we need to. Determine where this, these costs will be covered. Um we're looking at seven new grills and um two new trash cans. For a total of one thousand six hundred nine dollars and seventy cents.
One is Barnes Park.
Down by behind the um.
Oh, and you said.
Oh, I'm lower street. My head that was on the river down on the east side.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So and how.
And then you said seven, I'm like, that part's not picking up for seven, so I knew I was a lot. Thank you, Nora.
So how much is the cost?
One thousand six hundred and nine dollars and seventy cents.
Is Barnes on uh De Neco's list?
It is not. It'll get new signage, that's a part of, that's one of the projects on there, so all of the parks will get new park signs, so it will get that. Um.
You could. Paint letters of the word Barnes on those trash receptacles and then it would be the sign.
No.
Just try to be creative.
Bad idea.
So that's just coming for you for formal approval, so we get those boarded. Um we do have funds available in our current county parks millage. Um to cover this. Um but just following our purchasing policy, since it was not a budgeted expense, it does require council's approval. Um this will go in um when our collision, they're also redoing the picnic tables there, so.
I just have a question. Didn't we change our guidelines or expenditures? Up that number to fifteen hundred?
Fifteen huh, but this is sixteen.
No, fifteen, it's fifteen thousand, but it, that's for budgeted expenses, since this was not included in our budget, that's why it's coming.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Speed up the meeting.
Alright, next we're going to be asked to approve the section three of the policy revision.
We're changing numbers seven times.
Well, yes, it's a very minor change, so we're required to have a section three policy in place for um grants. Um when we receive certain grant funding, um so it's just a minor change instead of part um. Twenty-four CFR part seven, um one thirty-five, it is now part seventy-five. Um so we just had to go through and update that to reflect that in our policy, so it's very minor. And this just says that um. Instead of reporting on new hires and employees, how many were created as part of the federal funding project, we just now need to report the number of hours. Works by section three employees, so it's very minor, um but we just need this updated for our brand C D B G rental rehab project.
We have questions for city manager.
We adopted this last back in twenty nineteen.
Can I ask it, given that this is literally only the changing of a number? That we put that on our consent calendar? There's no discussion required? No, we can't do that?
It's not ministerial.
It's what?
It's not ministerial.
Ministerial.
It's not like a, it's not something that you're just, it's a, it's a substantive change to a. An agreement with another agency.
Okay.
It's something that. You have to, you actually have to do the full vote on.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We can do it. We came in early.
And then um the next two items are just discussion items. That we're going to have in regards to our cross connection control program. And then our art space rentals and just basically to notify the public of those processes. And that would be. So do we have any public comment? Everybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council?
Thank you, staff, for being here.
Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn? Support, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay.
Yeah, it's feeling better.
Meeting adjourned six forty-one P M, be back at seven, please.